Good evening, and welcome to the Auburn in Large School District Forum brought to you by Keegan Community College and The Citizen. I'm your moderator, Guy Cosentino. On May 17th, voters across the state of New York will go to the polls to vote on school budgets. In Auburn, that budget will be about $73 million. It's a .12% tax levy increase for the average $100,000 assessed value home. That's about 16 cents a month. The polls are open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, but voters will not only be able to vote on budgets, but they'll also be able to vote for candidates. And as has been tradition here at the college, we have had candidates from city council, congress, county legislature, mayor, sheriff, and the state legislature in to talk about their public service and also why they're running. We're doing that again with the three seats that are up this year. They are now held by William Andre, who was elected three years ago, and Fred Cornelius, who was appointed last year when Andy Roble, a member of the school board, stepped down. A third seat vacated by City Councilor Dia Carvajal in January has not been filled, and that will be filled after the election. Tonight, we are bringing you this forum with three of the candidates. They filed their petitions that have been certified by the school district. The candidates are running for a three-year term for the Auburn in Large School District. This is an unpaid job, so by the way, thank you on that particular item right there. As is in the past, we have sent a letter in the packets when they pick up their petitions to ask them to join us for the forum. And as always, we have had somebody from outside the college ask the questions of our candidates, and that is Jeremy Boyer, the executive editor of The Citizen, whose weekly column occurs on the editorial page of The Citizen every Thursday. He'll be asking the questions. I think he's been doing this for at least the last six or seven years, so we thank him as well. Our candidates who are sitting in the order of their opening statements are Mr. Andre, as we've mentioned. He is seeking a sixth term to the school board. Fred Cornelius, who did serve on the school board for one term, stepped down and then was reappointed last year, as well as newcomer Jeffrey Gasper. We'd like to thank all three of you gentlemen for joining us today. We're going to start with opening statements. Mr. Andre, you'll have two minutes. We have Ed, who's a student up here at the college, who's keeping our time, and they'll keep you on the straight and narrow. Mr. Andre, welcome.
Thank you, Guy. I'd like to thank the college and the citizen for hosting this. It's important that we get the message out to vote on the budget, which is every year very important. I have served on the Auburn school board. My first term was 1999. I served nine years and decided to walk away, and I sat around on Tuesday nights and committee nights hopelessly bored. I -- community service is something that is very important to me, so, you know, I started showing up at board meetings probably only five, six months after I got off and decided to run again. And I did it for three years, and then I had some work conflicts going on and decided to get off again, missed it, and went back. So total, I've been on 15 years. I'm also just finishing my sixth year as the Auburn representative to the Keegan and Aga BOSI's Board, and that's something that I enjoy as much as I do the Auburn Board. Little bit about myself, I have -- between my wife Christine and I, we have six children. She had two, I had four. We got married, oh goodness, I'm in trouble, 12, 13 years ago, and so together we have six. All four of my kids graduated from Auburn High School, and really, that's where my interest started. I was on the Casey Park Site Base team and continued to want to be part -- rather than complaining, I wanted to be part of the solution, and that's what I've done ever since. There's nothing, nothing, no service higher than being a board member. As Guy said, we get paid nothing. I don't want to get paid anything. I do it because I believe in public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. Mr. Cornelius, welcome back.
Thank you.
I appreciate, Guy, you taking the time and putting these things together. I think it's important, and Mr. Boyer taking time out of what I'm sure is a busy schedule to come out here and participate in this. As has been said, my name's Fred Cornelius. I am a life resident of the Auburn area in Keegan County, accepting some time that I spent in the military, which took me away. I have four children, three of whom are adults and are out making their way in the world best they can. I have a 12-year-old son who attends Auburn Junior High School, and actually, I have two grandchildren, one of which will be attending kindergarten next year at Owosco Elementary School. I've been a public servant my entire adult life in one form or another. I've worked 20 years plus for the Keegan County Sheriff's Office, and in that capacity, I've been afforded the opportunity to be an advocate for our community's children in the work that I've been allowed to do at the sheriff's office. Being on the school board is an extension of that and another way to perform that advocacy for our children in the form of helping out with getting their, the education component to their life on the right track. I was lucky enough back in September to be selected from a pool of very qualified candidates to fill an open position on the school board, and I was grateful for that. I look forward to working the next three years very hard with the other dedicated members on the board to move things in a positive direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. Mr. Gasper, welcome to the studio.
Thank you.
You have two minutes for an opening statement.
Thank you very much. Well, thanks again to everybody for having the open forum. As being a new face and name to the Auburn school board, I just wanted to introduce myself a little bit. Originally came from the Rochester area where I grew up. My wife Erin graduated from Auburn High School, and we both attended RIT where we met. I received my degree in telecommunications engineering from RIT, and my wife and I moved to Auburn over 10 years ago. We have four children, one of which is still in preschool. Three of the others attend Seward Elementary School in second, fourth, and sixth grade. One of the reasons I wanted to join the school board is because my wife and kids are actively involved in a number of school groups and organizations, as well as supporting programs in Auburn. And as I became more entrenched in Auburn, wanted to help lend my expertise in telecommunications and technology sector to the school district. I work for a company headquartered in Rochester, New York, where I do telecommunications consulting. I work with a lot of libraries, school districts, municipalities on their infrastructure, and I also help the several regional BOSI's districts with their infrastructure planning. So I wanted to bring that expertise to the board. I know I have a lot to learn, and it's a little bit like drinking from the fire hose, but I'm excited to learn more about it and be able to help out where I can.
Thank you. Welcome. We'll now hear from Mr. Boyer, who can ask questions of any of you individually or you as a group, and if it's for all, everyone as a group, we'll rotate through. Mr. Boyer, welcome.
All right. Well, yeah, I think all, pretty much all the questions they have are for the whole group, so. First one I'm going to start with today has to do with the Auburn Teachers Union contract talks. In a recent meeting, they, a number of the teachers were outside just trying to make the public aware of the fact that they've been without a contract, a new contract for quite some time. So my question for all three of you is, why do you think negotiations are taking this long? And to that degree, does the board need to get more directly involved in getting this contract situation resolved?
We'll start with Mr. Andre and then work our way through.
I would say that it's, you know, it's disappointing that it's taken this long, and I would like to see the sides get back to the table. I've told both sides that we need to get back to the table and negotiate. I will add that Auburn teachers are second to none. They're top-notch. You know, my, I always use, you might as well use personal examples, and my personal example are my four kids, who all did very well, all went on to college, all have successful careers. And it started with the dedication of the teachers they had from Casey Park to, at that time, East Middle School to right through the high school. They were prepared for the next step in their life. The teachers deserve a contract. You know, we need to get it done. Both sides need to get back to the table. I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know how we're going to do it. I, you know, we have, as a board, we have parameters that we've talked about with administration, and there's, as long as they come in within those parameters, you know, we're willing to, you know, to listen to what administrative, administration tells us that they have. But right now, with both sides not at the table, that's not going to happen, and that's unfortunate. Their, both sides are good people. I know the leadership of the ATA, they're good people, solid people, people that care about the community, people that care about the district and the students. And certainly, administration wants to get it done and need to get it done. So when you have two, two groups, and they're both good groups, frankly, I'm frustrated why, why we can't get some movement. You know, most people in the community know this is what I do for a living. I'm a union rep. I negotiate union contracts. I negotiate more contracts, you know, than ATA will in, you know, in a year's period. So I know what it takes, and you'd have to get back to, you're not going to get it done if you're not at the table.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. Mr. Cornelius, on this issue of ATA and the negotiations.
I think that it's, I also think that it's important for us to get everybody back to the table and talk, and you're not going to accomplish anything if you're not. I think it's important to know how the process works. I think that it's, that, that when people go to the negotiation table, and I've negotiated my share of contracts at the sheriff's office for our union, nowhere near what Bill has done, but, but the process is that you have a team, and you send them, like Bill said, with a set of parameters, that the, these are, these are your marching orders. You go in and you try and establish an agreement within these, within these parameters, and come back to us when you get something somewhere close to that. And until that happens, the board doesn't, doesn't hear about it, and nor should we. We shouldn't hear about the, this is what happened at this meeting, and this is what happened at that meeting, because it would be counterproductive. We've established a set of guidelines, go out and negotiate in good faith with these guidelines, and then when you've reached something close to that, bring it back to us. And I think it's important for the ATA to know that, that I'm happy to see them at the, at the board meetings, I'm happy to talk to them about, you know, whatever they want to talk about, but the contract is being negotiated by teams of people, and, and the board really doesn't have, you know, we don't know what they're talking about right now, nor should we, until, until the end of that process. So should the board get more involved? I don't, I don't think we should at this point, until we get to the point where, where we've got something to vote on, and we just don't have anything to vote on right now.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. Mr. Gasper, on this issue of negotiations.
Yeah, I think, well, one thing is, being the new kind of board member, a lot of things that I'm still getting ramped up and up to speed with, so I don't have a lot of insight to, as far as history goes. I do know, one thing is, today is Teacher Appreciation Day, so I'd like to thank all my, my kids' teachers and all the teachers in the district for what they do. Having a lot of friends in the, that are teachers in the district, I hear a lot of things that go on, and it's a tough job, so I appreciate all their help. I do understand that working without a contract can be stressful and unsettling at times, as being in the industry, I've been in that situation before, so I can certainly attest to the concern about being in that situation. But at this point, being new to the group, I don't really have a lot of insight into how the negotiations have been thus far and how long they've been taking, but look forward to hearing more about it. Once it does come to our attention, I think I'll have a little more breadth into how we can handle the situation.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer.
All right. Well, sort of a related question. I'd like to get your sense of the general relationship between the district's staff and the administration. Jeff Pirazzolo's been the superintendent now since the summer, and obviously, he has been here for a number of years before that, but nonetheless, it's a new, a new leadership, a new administration to a degree. And just wondering, you know, with this contract out there and, and some of the issues that are, that are coming out, is there a concern about too much tension between the administration and the district staff?
We'll start with Mr. Cornelius.
I have not seen that, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm being naive, or maybe I'm sheltered from it from, to some extent, but I don't see a, a lot of tension between, between the superintendent's office or the assistant superintendent's offices and the rank-and-file teachers, employees of the district. We're always open to hear concerns from, from the teachers and the staff and everything like that, and, and since September, when I got on the board, I haven't heard anything from anybody with, with those kind of concerns. Back in, back the last time I was on the board was when Mr. Pirazzolo was, was hired as assistant superintendent for personnel. I was, I was impressed with him back then at that time, and, and I was, you know, not part of the board when he was, when he was elevated to the position of superintendent, but knowing what I knew of him from my time previously, I was, I was encouraged by that move, and, and so far, I've been happy with his performance with interacting with the board, as well as with what I've seen with him interacting with other staff and employees of the district.
Thank you. Mr. Gasper.
Yes, I think, you know, being new, getting an insight into how everybody works together has definitely been, been interesting as I've kind of gone through the journey thus far. You know, in any situation where there's a change in guard or a change in, in leadership and, and participation, there's going to be times where everybody needs to figure out how to work together, best way to people work together and, and work through those things. So one of the things that, that I want to bring to the table is being able to take a step back, look at things how they're run today, figure out if it's, if there's changes or solutions that may, that I can help lend my expertise to, to, to make things run smoother, more development between cross, cross groups and things of that nature. But being new to the, being new to everything, I'm just kind of taking a bird's eye view and seeing how, being a newcomer, I can maybe lend some expertise or options into how people work together within the district.
Thank you. Mr. Andre, is this issue between, is there any tension between staff and administration?
Well, I certainly, I haven't heard that. Superintendent has, you know, the kind of personality where, you know, he, he's not a confrontational person. He's, he likes to have a kind of relationship with staff where, you know, what's good for them is good for him, what's good for them is good for the students. I don't see him confrontational at all, and I don't have staff coming to me saying, you know, any negative things about, about the superintendent. So, you know, if it's happening, it has not come to my attention, and, you know, I, I don't know what the, there's definitely tension, but I don't know why it's there. It disappoints me that it's there, and like I said earlier, we have to put all that aside and get back to the table and get a contract. Everyone deserves a contract. I will say, this seems less confrontational than it's been in the past. I've been kicking around for a long time, and this, that's what surprises me. It seems less confrontational, but yet, we're not getting anything done. So everyone's got to get back to the table. I, I, like I said, I've stated that to both sides, and that's what we need to do.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Boyer.
All right. Well, I'm sure one issue is probably finances, because, you know, finances are tight, and that's reflected in this budget that the public's going to be voting on. It's a 1.6% spending increase with a .12% tax levy increase to keep it at the state tax cap. I know the two of you did vote on moving that budget forward, but I'm going to ask you the question anyway, and, and Mr. Gasper, your thoughts as well. Do you support this budget proposal, and why or why not?
Mr. Gasper, we're going to start with you. We have two minutes on this.
All right. Thank you. Yes, I do support it. I think that, you know, reviewing what information, and the board has been kind enough to disseminate to me about the budget, you know, school boards and school districts everywhere are, are facing a lot of challenges with, with funding, funding sources and increasing cost in, in operations. So it's a lot of work to come up with a plan and a budget that reflects what's available as far as grants, funding, you know, revenue sources from, from various sources, and, and supporting all the programs that the district has to offer. The, our district offers a lot of programs that other districts do not, and such that we have to fund those gets challenging. So I kind of applaud the, the review of the budget, finding ways to make sometimes a round peg squinting fit in a square hole is difficult, so we've had to, had to work through those issues, and I think we're going to continue to have to see those. But if we can find, help find additional funding sources through other grants and other means of financing, maybe we can help expand some of the programs and bring back some things that, that some of the students want to, want to see in the district as well.
Okay. Mr. Andre, two minutes.
Yeah. I, you know, that, I keep going back to, I've done a lot of budgets, and this is one of, one of the better budgets. We've had some budgets that, you know, I've had before the 2% property tax where we had to go, you know, some rather large increases. This one, and, and for once, I, I need to be careful, but I give the state credit, I give the governor's office credit and the assembly and the senate credit. They, they did put additional money into public education, certainly not the amount, I mean, if you look at the, the gap elimination adjustment, we're still out millions of dollars. But, you know, they, they eliminated that, which gave us some additional revenue. So it certainly is, when I look back at all the budgets I've been part of, it's, it's one of the better. I mean, if you look at the star, you know, basic stars, I think Guy mentioned is $1.97 a year, 16 cents a month, and the enhanced star is a decrease of $19.82. The, you know, so it's, it's better than what it has been, but still, there's a lot of school districts in New York State, I know are, a district that's just a few hundred students less, Oswego, has massive, massive budget gap. So I give our administration, and in particular, Lisa Green, who is our chief financial person, a lot of kudos because she's really worked hard and done a good job, and we've had some really good grants that have helped us out. So yeah, I definitely support the budget.
Mr. Cornelius, you have two minutes on this subject as well.
$73.4 million is a number that I, I can't even wrap my head around most of the time, and the fact that we're, that we've got, that we've got people that, that can tell us, you know, line by line, exactly where all the money's going, where, where we've got money coming in, and, and we've been able to, to get this budget in place once we finally got the, the appropriate numbers, or appropriate probably is not the right word, but the numbers that, the, the funding that the state was willing to give us. The fact that we came in with only a .12% increase in, I think is a, is a, just incredible on behalf of our staff. That being said, and I, and I do support this budget. That being said, I think that we need to, we need to start looking farther ahead, because we've had some presentations where it's a little bit darker picture, maybe three, four, or five years down the road, depending on how the foundation aid formula is interpreted by the state, and there's some differences as to how they feel it should be, it should be interpreted as to how our staff feels that it should be interpreted for it to be fair, to the tune of somewhere around $5 million difference in, in what people think. And $5 million, three years down the road, you know, that, that's going to be a significant problem, so I think that we need to, we did a good job this year, we can, we can continue to do, do good, good, good work, but I'd like to see us sit down and do some really good computations on some long-range budget planning so that we're, that we maintain in a good position for the foreseeable future.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer.
Well, you kind of answered my next question already. I just don't know if you, if we want to skip Mr. Cornelius, but I was going to ask, you know, we, we, we're seeing what tax caps are looking like now with the inflation rate, you know, and they're very, very minimal tax caps. You have mandates coming down the road, like the minimum wage impact that's coming. So how concerned are you about finances and the budget and the, you know, not, not necessarily for this coming budget year, but for the years ahead, as far as it being a difficult thing to swing for the district?
Okay. We'll still let Mr. Cornelius answer, but we'll start with Mr. Andre as we round the horn.
We are, you know, as Fred mentioned, we're already talking about future budgets, already working on it, because there are some things coming down the pike that, you know, we can't, we can't avoid. I know it's, but in my role at Keegan and Aga BOSI's, we've already talked about some of those salaries that needed to be brought up, and we, I don't believe we have that issue. I'm not certain, but I don't believe we have that issue at, at the Auburn schools. But it's definitely a concern, because it's going to continue to go up. So, you know, we have to look ahead, and we have, we have not only good administrators, but a really good board. And I know every time I talk to the board president, Mike McColl, he's always talking about that, always looking ahead, because there are, you know, Fred alluded to, there's some, some dark, dark clouds down the road, especially if things change in Albany, and we could go right back to where we were, you know, a few years ago. So you always, every penny you spend, you have to be very careful, because you just don't know, you don't know what mandates are going to come from the state, you don't, you know, you just can't, you can't, every time you think you have everything, every scenario you could possibly think of to happen in a budget, something different happens. I've seen it budget after budget, year after year, where something new comes down the pike. Maybe you lose a grant. We, we have some people have worked really, Leela George, for example, worked really hard on some grants. If you lose grant money, you have to decide what am I, if it's a worthwhile program, I might, are we going to fund that, or are we going to let it go? So you never know what's going to happen down the road. So you definitely have to start planning, and I'm glad that we already have. We're, we're already talking about planning for next year's budget. We've got to stay ahead of it.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. Mr. Cornelius, you'll get two minutes on this subject anyway.
There's, it, there's, there's plenty to talk about, I guess. I mean, the, the, the budget, there's a lot of things that, that affect the budget. You know, you mentioned the, the potential minimum wage increase. We, we spoke, we had some presentations about the so-called Cadillac Tax on Health Insurance, which hasn't been affecting us tremendously right now, but has the potential, depending on where we go with contract negotiations and what everybody's making in the future, and, and where we fall on that sliding scale, you know, how much we're going to have to pay into that. And that, that has the potential to have a very large impact on, on certain areas of the budget. We are, we're already planning on, on going in, in, in starting talks in July. We're talking about having a workshop on the, on the budget in July, you know, to, to start working forward and working forward, and I think that, that that's going to be a very positive thing for us. We've got, we've got some very smart people that, that work in the district, who are forward-thinking people. You know, I'm a big proponent of the idea, you hire smart people, you let them hire smart people to work around them, and you let them do their job, and I think that, that that's what's happening, and we're getting, we're getting good numbers from them. But it's going to be tight moving forward, and I look forward to being part of the process of trying to, trying to make things come in, you know, as even as we can get them.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. Mr. Gasper, this issue of the tax cap and how it could impact Auburn in the future.
Yeah, I think one of the things that, that I've done is sit down with some of the current board members and gotten a better understanding of really how the budget is constructed and what the, you know, what the elements of it are. As with any, you know, budget process, especially on the long-term budget, it's always comes down to the theme of having to do more or more with less, and if that's the, and that's the overriding theme that you have to have in your mind, and to get over that hurdle, finding more avenues for funding, such as, such as grants and, and any other financing sources that can be leveraged for, to continue. But I definitely think that, you know, being in a, on the corporate side, looking at, at financing, you have to look at, you know, a revenue stream several years out, which is very hard to do. to do. And it's just as hard to look at the tax implications on a budget several years out as well. So, just using history, using data for as much data as you can compile for how budgets are currently set up today, how they've impacted in the past, using that information to look forward is key. So, one of the things that, you know, given some of my financial background, being able to help look at the budget, especially from a non-for-profit aspect, look at it and say, you know, what is this going to, what is this section of the budget going to look like in two or three years from now? Is it going to increase, decrease, stay the same? And focus on the aspects that have an impact that could decrease in the future and how you can offset that going forward.
Thank you. We just want to let you know that you're watching the Auburn Large School District Forum for 2016 that is brought to you by KU Community College and the Citizen. Questions are being asked by Jeremy Boyer, the executive editor of the Citizen, and he's asking questions to three candidates who are running. There are three seats up. They are William Andre, who's in the first seat, Fred Cornelius, who's in the second seat, and then Jeffrey Gasper, who's in the third. Mr. Boyer?
Okay. One of the things I noticed in looking over the budget newsletter that is now on the website and I assume is probably going to be in the mailbox any day, is that the chief information officer position has been eliminated. That was a position created in 2013 to help guide the district's use of data and technology. And I know Mr. Moon stepped down a few, maybe a month or two ago to pursue another position. I'm just wondering, given all the emphasis in New York State on data and on technology, if that was a prudent thing to eliminate that, why, you know, why was that the decision that was arrived at? So, for all three candidates on that.
Mr. Cornelius, we're starting with you.
Well, we, we had discussions about, about that position, about eliminating that position and how to, how to fill the gap that would be left behind if that position was, was in fact eliminated. And it was brought to us by the superintendent and the staff that they had a solution that would be both fiscally responsible and, and do all the things that we needed to do to move forward with, with our data management and with the technology aspect of things with other personnel. And based on the recommendations of the superintendent and the other staff, it certainly seemed like a prudent thing to do. I agreed with the decision to, to change the staffing of the district to eliminate that position and give those duties to other personnel. And I think, you know, obviously moving forward, we're going to see if that was the right thing to do and if we have any troubles. I don't believe that we will and I think that, that, that everything was looked at from, from every angle and as I understand it, Mr. Moon's now in a, in a better position. So, he's, I think he's happy with where he's at.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. Mr. Gasper on this issue of the chief information officer.
Sure. Well, I can't speak to the specifics on, you know, the background on the change in the organization. I can't say that there's obviously a lot of revenue coming in for infrastructure, IT, telecommunications in the school district. Smart schools is obviously the next kind of capital outlay from the state as far as bringing those, bringing revenue in for infrastructure and IT-related needs at the school. I can't say that, being from the telecommunications side of the house, a lot of the assistance in deploying these IT infrastructure and, you know, rolling out iPads to all the students, all these kinds of things that are kind of coming down the pike. A lot of the vendors themselves are providing a lot of the consultative help, assistance and expertise in rolling these out. And as such, I've seen a lot of school districts across the state that we've worked with rely heavily on those partners and leverage their expertise. They're sometimes willing to do it at a very low or no cost. So, it's a definitely an option that a lot of school districts are starting to see and they're seeing smoother rollouts in their IT infrastructure as they, as they do that.
Thank you. Mr. Andre?
I will, I will, you know, the chief information officer was brought to us by former superintendent Connie Evelyn. And I was concerned about it at the time because you don't want, I was never convinced that it was a needed position. And what you have to, what you have to remember is that Mr. Moon and, you know, he, he did a fine job. I'm not, it's not about him. But there's a lot of people that work in the Auburn School District in technology, a lot of very good people. And we wouldn't drop the ball on this. I was at a two and a half hour facilities meeting just last night and a good part of the conversation was technology. And so, I just heard this last night, we have it covered, you know, there's some, some good things that are happening, good things that will continue to happen. And I do not believe not having that position there will hurt us one little bit. And if there is, if there is a, you know, a hiccup in it, we'll have to take another look by, I just don't believe it's going to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer?
Okay. I'd like to ask you all about filling board vacancies because this particular year, two of them, for various reasons came up. And typically it's three options when you have a vacancy. You can either work to hold a special election to fill that vacancy and let the voters decide. You can have the board appoint someone or you can leave it vacant until the next actual election, the next regular election in May. Mr. Cornelius was appointed, obviously, and then the board decided to leave the other vacancy open because of how late it occurred. So, for all three of you, I'd like to get your, your position on, you know, how, what do you think the best way is to handle board vacancies when they come up, given those options that are there?
And I think we're going to start with the guy who hasn't had to make this decision at all. So, we'll start with Mr. Gasper.
Well, yeah, it's part of my role in my current company. I participate in two different local government corporation boards from an outside perspective. But one thing I've noticed from, that they also occasionally have the same situation where they have vacancies and how to approach that. And I think it's all about timing. It depends on at that current time when the vacancy is, is there, what's the most prudent way to, to address it? And sometimes it may be to hold off and leave that vacancy open until a new official, you know, voting period. One may be to gain insight, get somebody on board quickly and to help, to help that. And sometimes it just comes down to a numbers decision on how big do they, you know, want the board to be. So, obviously it's a little different in a school district, but I think it's all about timing and situation as far as what the best option is.
Thanks, Gasper. Mr. Andre, who has had to make this decision?
Yeah, I've been involved in at least twice that, off the top of my head, you know, I would say, I would just use numbers. If it's two years that are left, see, the problem that I, the biggest problem I see is it costs money every time. If you have a special election to fill one board seat, it costs money and money should be used to educate children not to have special elections. So, I would say if it's two years or more, you wait until the next board election. If it's somebody that was just elected, for example, you have four, you know, and we've done that before, not in my time, but in the past, it has been done that way. So, you would elect the top four rather than just the top three. So, and then I would say if it's between a year and a year and a half, you do what we did with Fred and you appoint. And we were fortunate and I had hoped at the time, Fred was one of the people that popped into my head, that we had someone with experience. Because Fred came on, all he had to do was be brought back up to speed and get his required training from, that the state requires board members to have, and he was fully up to speed. And then, as we did with Dia, Dia held on right to the very end because she, she enjoyed what she did with the, with the school district on the board. So, Dia, you know, she, she was at the last board meeting she possibly could be at before she was sworn for the city council. So, if it's six months or less, I don't think you'd do anything. You know, we've had it that way now since Dia left. It's been, you know, going on five months and it's been fine. So, I don't think it's an issue.
Okay. Mr. Andre and Mr. Cornelius, who has been on both ends of this decision.
That's true. I, I think that Mr. Andre is underestimating how many times he's had to make this decision. I think it's been probably half a dozen in the last, in the last 10 years or thereabouts. And that being said, all of these things are, all of these things are accurate and I think that, that the timing is, is exactly what, you know, kind of drives the decision on what to do. But taking one step, one step further, I don't think that we need to continually have to have this discussion over and over again every time this comes up. I think that, that one of the things that, that I'd like to see done over the course of this next term or my next term would be for us to talk in a, in a policy development setting on establishing a policy. This is how we're going to do it. As a board, moving forward, we're going to have a policy that says if it happens within this time and this time, or if it happens, you know, within, you know, a year or six months, this is what we're going to do. Then we don't need to take up a lot of time having that discussion over and over again. And there's no question from the community or the media or whoever, what's going to happen? We know because it's written down because we established it in a, in a, in a policy and it's been approved through the policy process. And this is the way, unless it gets changed, this is the way it's going to be done. I think that, that it's very important to have that kind of stability and there's, there's just no reason to have this discussion over and over again about how to, how to do it. And the other option, you know, thinking about it as far as appointments, you can do it the way that, the way that it was done with me, you know, where you seek out people and interview them and whatever. You also have the option of looking at a previous election and maybe, maybe taking the person who got the, the most votes that wasn't, you know, elected in the previous election. There's a lot of options, but I think we need to have a policy that says this is how we do it.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer?
All right. Well, it kind of relates to this next question, which is why are we not having contested school board elections as much? We, we've had like, I think, three out of the last four years, it's just been three candidates. And I can remember at least one year where I think we had three rows of candidates. So, you know, is there something that is happening to, to make people not interested or willing to do this job? And if so, is there anything that can be done to try to generate more interest in running?
Basically, Mr. Boyer and I are lonely down here. So, we'll start with Mr. Andre and we'll work our way down the line.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. There was a time and I was part of that where there was nine. I've been part of when there were six and seven. But last time I was elected, there was just three. And this time, just three. And I don't know why. I know it's a huge time commitment. You know, like, like I said last night, I was at a two and a half hour facilities meeting. So, you have your committee meetings, you have your regular meetings, you have your time that you have to prep. You have to get all your information and be prepared for the meeting. So, it's a huge time commitment and I think life has gotten so busy that people just don't have the, have the time. And I know a lot of good people out there. I can think of two very quickly that I'd love to have on the board, that I've talked about being on the board. And they like, they prefer to be on the ground at their, their children's elementary school or at the junior high or at the high school. You know, we also have some groups that are very busy, you know, our music boosters, our sports boosters. And there's, so there's a lot of people that like to go that avenue. I don't know why it's changed, especially so quick, quickly. At once, you know, I think part of it is there's more, I don't, I, my opinion, there's more peace now. At one time, when I first got on the board, there was a community group that was quite loud and caused a lot of noise. And 1999, I was the first non-endorse, they called themselves Citizens for Fiscal Responsibility. I was the first non-endorse CFR candidate to, to win a board seat. And so, you don't have, you don't have those groups anymore. There just doesn't seem to be the angry community that there used to be, which, which is a good, a very good thing. I would like to see more people, obviously, but it's a good thing that we don't have that divided community.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. Mr. Cornelius on this issue of getting the people to run.
I wish I had the, I wish I had the answer to that question. I can tell you that, that I was disappointed to have to leave when I, when I left the board the last time. Since that time, I've, I've put myself in a, in a position where I was able to, to come back and express my interest and, and be in a position to really dedicate the time that's necessary because it is, it is a very time-consuming process and it is a, a lot. It takes away from, you know, some, some family time and sometimes you don't get to bed as early as you, as you'd like to because you're, you're looking at paperwork. But it's, it's an important thing and educating our children is an important thing and taking part, taking part of that process is an important thing. And maybe, maybe we're not, we're not, you know, publicizing things well enough or maybe we're not, we're not, you know, being as, as big a cheerleaders as we need to be to say, hey, come out and, and take part in the process. Because I would be just as happy now if there was three tiers of, of candidates and we had a discussion. I, I really enjoy a debate about issues and, and I'd love to see it moving forward, getting, getting more people involved. And maybe that's another discussion we have with the board and, you know, other stakeholders in the community. How do we, how do we get people more interested? Because it, it certainly is a valuable thing to do, I believe, and more people do need to get, get involved.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. As someone who's stepped forward, Mr. Gasper?
Yeah, I think, just to piggyback on, on the comments already made, you know, kind of the life catches up to you kind of thing. I think there's a lot of, nowadays, there's so many different organizations, groups, clubs that, that parents are involved in and asked to participate in and spend time in. So, your day gets diluted with a lot of activities and given, you know, a lot of us have a number of kids, you get spread pretty thin. I think one of the things is just the potentially, just the unknowing of what a school board does. You know, not knowing what something is, you're probably not as likely to want to step up and be a part of it. So, like Fred said, getting a little more exposure out there as far as what the school board does, what it does and doesn't do, how it affects the academics of, of the kids in the, in the district. I learned a lot of things about what a school board, you know, what the school board is involved with that I had no idea they were part of. So, just in my early, you know, discussions with the current members. So, I think, I think it comes down to maybe, again, a little more openness about what a school board does, what the, what, what kind of opportunities there are available. Personally, what I found interesting about it was the fact of, one, being able to just be more involved in obviously my kids' education, find out what they're doing in school, what's coming up, what challenges are in there, out there for them, as well as from my own personal view into being more involved in the community and being able to help leverage my knowledge and, from an engineering and finance perspective and help, you know, share that knowledge with the, with the school district.
Thank you. We're going to have time for at least one, maybe two more questions. Mr. Boyer?
Well, I certainly want to get into a Common Core question because that's certain, been a big topic in New York State public education. This year, you know, there was again another fairly vocal opt-out movement for the tests, the Common Core tests for grades three through eight. But there were also changes in this year's test. They were shorter, they were designed differently and they, you know, didn't count for teacher evaluations. That's going to be delayed for a few more years. So, you know, given all that, I'm, my question for all three of you is, do you think these tests are an effective tool and should parents be having their children take them?
Okay. And we're going to give you a minute for these last two questions. We're going to just do a minute each, if you don't mind. So, we'll start with Mr. Cornelius.
Cut us down to a minute on the biggest question.
Sorry. I don't control the clock all the time.
The, the question of Common Core, I think that, I think that the, the problem with Common Core was, was in its implementation. I think that, that the idea that we need to be competitive, New York State and our school district and every other school district, our children need to be competitive in, in the, in the state when they get out of school, they need to be competitive in the, in the nation and internationally, they need to be competitive. And so, I do think that they need to be taking the tests. I think that it's important. I don't think that the, that the tests need to play such a heavy role. I don't think that the, that the, the tests need to, to play such a heavy role in, in teacher evaluations. But I, I think that if it had been rolled out instead of all at once, if it had been rolled out over a period of 13 years, you started a cohort when, in, you know, the earliest stages of a kid's education and move it through that way, that it would have went a lot better and there wouldn't have been as much resistance.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. Mr. Gasper, on this issue of Common Core.
Yeah, I think, you know, from what I've, again, had my limited exposure to, obviously, my kids have taken the test, and, you know, I've heard their concerns and, and issues with, with it. I, I do agree that it's, it's something that's mandated. It's New York State coming and, and, you know, saying you have to, have to roll these out. I know that the opt-out rate was lower this year than it was last year. And I know there was rollout issues with it, just even from a logistics standpoint. So I agree that they should have probably done more of a, you know, slower deployment with the, with it. But I also understand that, I believe that it's very important for kids to take tests just in general. I don't care what they receive on the test from a grade perspective. When you, you know, when you get out into the, into high school and take Regents exams into college, or into the professional field, a lot of employers are now making it mandating that you take a test to ensure that you know what your job will entail. So I think it's very important from that aspect to get prepped on taking tests on a regular basis.
Thank you, Mr. Gasper. Mr. Andre, this issue of Common Core.
Of all the issues I've talked to Auburn parents about in the last, since Common Core first rolled out, this has been the most questions I've had. First, if you opt your children out, I, that's a personal decision. It's a personal decision that a parent makes or a student makes. So that, that I'm not, I don't, I tell people, that's, that's your option, to do what you think is best. I do think higher standards are a good thing. That's something we're, we're, we're lucky to have in New York State, that our standards are high. And Common Core, like Fred and Jeff both said, was terribly flawed, terribly flawed when it came out. Kids that were in second, third grade were really put in a bad position. I'm not, I'm not against higher standards, but this was terribly flawed.
Thank you. Mr. Boyer, your last question.
Last one, I'll try to make it a short one, but it's probably not. But Auburn has definitely been a leader in lobbying state government and, and getting, trying to get its fair share of, of money back here. And given the success that's, that's been had, and this year's budget, as you said, Mr. Andre earlier, really, really was one of the better ones you've seen in a long time. But does that effort, that lobbying, that outreach still need to continue? And if so, what specific issues are important to, to be pushing for when you talk to Albany?
Mr. Gasper, you're on this, you'll have one minute on this question as well.
All right. Well, yeah, one of the things, like I said, I've been getting a lot more exposed to, for budgets as far as what the school budget is composed of and comprised of. Definitely getting in front of Albany and understanding what their positioning is, and who are the, the stakeholders out there, and what their positions are is important. So you can bring that feedback to the, to the district and better understand what certain aspects to, that you may need to focus on as far as it comes to budgeting.
Thank you. Mr. Andre.
There's still serious flaws in the way the state of New York funds public education. And we need to be in Albany as often as we have been. We have been blessed in this community. I'm not going to name names because I'll forget a key person, and, and I don't want to do that. But we have had some outstanding community members, not, not just board members, but community members who have gone to Auburn on, on the behalf of public education in Auburn, have done a fantastic job. That's not going to end. It did not end this year, it will not end next year. It's always going to be an issue, and we always have to make sure that Auburn is heard in Albany.
Thank you. And Mr. Cornelius, on this issue of advocacy in Albany.
No one's going to look out for us if we don't look out for ourselves. So we're, we're going to continue to send, send people to Albany, and we're going to continue to, to lobby for the things that we think are, are important. I think one of the, one of the big things is the foundation aid formula and getting that nailed down on how, how, how do we determine how much money we're going to get? It helps us plan. We don't know until the last minute how much money we've got to spend. So that's, that's a terrible way of doing business. We need to be able to plan farther ahead, so we need to be able to have that formula and, and understand how it's going to be applied. That's very important. And then working on Common Core and tweaking the things that need to be tweaked, like you said, it was, there were some changes made this year, there's, there's additional changes that need to be made to, to make things work a little bit better. And, and we need to keep, keep the pressure on. And we had a, a good result this year, maybe we'll have a better result next year.
Thank you. We're now going to switch to closing statements. As we said at the beginning, we'll go in reverse order. We'll hear from Jeffrey Gasper first. You have two minutes there.
All right, thank you. Well, thanks for everybody for, one, inviting me to the forum and for hosting the forum. It was definitely good to get to meet everybody and discuss the topics. There's certainly a lot of things that are obviously new to me, and I'm kind of drinking from the fire hoses, they say, a little bit. But I appreciate the current board's openness to meeting with me and helping me understand topics and, and so on and so forth. I feel that my technology and finance background will be a good addition to the current board as far as insight into what other districts are doing that I'm seeing, what other Bosse districts are, are doing. And I look forward to having that. Kind of, and finally, there's, while there's a number of, you know, issues and things that, that the Auburn district needs to work through and is challenged with, you've got to understand that we're not alone, that there's school districts across the state of New York that are having the same challenges, same financial issues that they are dealt with every year. And working with those other districts to see what's working with, for them, and for them to see what's working for us, I think would be a huge benefit for everybody. So I look forward to trying to leverage other districts and what they're doing and how they're receiving grants, what other programs are they offering their students that maybe we could, is something that I look forward to doing.
Thank you, Mr. Gasper. We'll now hear from Fred Cornelius. Mr. Cornelius.
I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here and talk about all these issues. I am looking forward to the next three years of, of working with a dedicated group of people to try and move things in the right direction. There's a couple of things that, that we didn't discuss that I'd, that I'd like to, to mention in my closing, and that is, you know, we, our graduation rate keeps, keeps going up, we're moving in the right direction. But we need to find different ways for kids to get to that graduation. Not all of our kids are college-bound. Not all of our kids take that path, and that's fine. And, and we need to find ways for them to, to get their diploma. If it takes five years, fine. If it takes six, that's fine, as long as we get them there. I think that that's, that that's the important thing. We've got some, some programs right now that are working, the P-Tech program and partnering with, with businesses in the community to, to help kids gain skills and, and while they're, they're earning credits and, and even college credits is very important. And I think expansions of that and other similar programs could really, really benefit our, our children and give us an opportunity to close that gap of where our graduation is now and where we want it to be. In addition to that, I think that we can, we can work on more transparency in, in how we operate and how we do our business. I think that we're doing a pretty good job right now as a board, but sometimes it seems like, like we present things, like the decision's already been made when we sit down at the, at the, at the table at the board meeting. And, and that's really not the case. But I would love to see more discourse and more discussion about, about issues. The people of the community are entitled to know not only the decision that you make, but the reason that you made it. And I, and I think we can do a little bit better job at doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornelius. We'll now finish off with William Andre. Mr. Andre.
I would like to start by thanking everybody again for, for having us. It was, it was a good discussion. I want to, I want to spend my time, part of my time thanking some people. I want to thank the eight people that I serve with. Mike, Kathy, Eli, Sam, Fred, Carol, Monica, and, and my, my partner Fred. And I look forward to working with Jeff. It is a tough job. It, it is a thankless job. There is times you get accosted in your front yard. Andre, are you kidding me? Turf? You know, you hear all those things, but it does not stop me from doing what I want to do because when I sit on that stage, year after year, and watch 300 or so young men and ladies go by that have grabbed their diploma, I sit there, I go home, it's the happiest day of my year. I have an 11-year-old grandson that I love dearly, Aiden, and he is at Seward Elementary. And, you know, he's doing well, and he's doing well, and that, and that makes me happy. I like being part of it. I love working with very intelligent people, and we have a lot of people that work for the school district that are very intelligent, and I like being part of it. So thank you for all the people, all our board members, all our administrators that do all the great things that they do. The Auburn School District is far different from what it was in 1990. I have lived it. The first year I was on the board was disastrous for me personally because my opinions were different. We were able to get some good people, you know, in the early years, the Mike Sterns that, Michelle Seedor's, you know, and little by little, it started to change where we had some people that wanted to be part of working as a group and not being divisive and, and all the infighting that we used to have. We've moved the right direction. I'm not, you know, I'm not going to sit here and pretend that we don't have a, a long ways to go because we do. I want to make Auburn a top-notch school district where people want to move and have their children educated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Andre. And thank you to all three of you. As a taxpayer, I would say thank you for your service. It's not always easy going out on the campaign trail and, and also getting people who ask you about turf almost anywhere. So oddly enough, not a question this time around. So Mr. Boyer was disappointed on that. We also want to thank Mr. Boyer for his thoughtful questions as always and being willing to help promote this forum that we do hope helps the public. We want to thank a couple of other people real quickly. We want to thank Ed Arthimer for doing this and all the students here at the college. We also want to thank Kendra Bowen, who is the new person at the school district we're working with. We worked for many years with Karen Vasile, but Kendra Bowen has been very helpful in getting the candidates this advanced information, and we appreciate that. We're going to take a couple of months off for the summer as students head into finals in the next two weeks. We'll be back in the fall. But we do encourage you before that to go to the polls on May 17. Polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. It is important, not just because there are three candidates running and they're pretty sure to be elected, but you do have a budget that has to be voted on, and they do encourage you to go out and voice your opinion on the budget. Before we go though, a couple of quick notes. This show is not possible without the students here at the college. We've had a very short season this year, but I want to thank all the students who've participated, as well as the staff here. Steve Keeler, Doug Brill, Mr. Morano, as well as Sean Secor and Jeff Sazniak, who put this all on in different ways, make us look good as well as sound good. I want to thank them for their help as well. We'll be back in a couple of months, but on behalf of UCU Community College and the citizen, I want to thank you for watching. We urge you again to exercise your right to vote on May 17. We hope you have a good night, have a great tomorrow, and a terrific summer.